To our September 2nd planning commission. If you would, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's right. We have a lot of community tonight just thank you for freedom of liberty that cares about this condition was for is pray that you stood in wisdom in this sermon that you did for projects tonight to spread for all the people who work for the city's community and all the amazing work that's been being listened to and they watch this. Now let's do call to order. Let's begin with a roll call.
Brent Couch.
Here.
Chris Hussein.
Here.
Clement Ogonyemi.
Garrett Howerland.
Here.
Howard Austin.
Here.
Jennifer Keith.
Here.
Mark Cloud.
Here.
Ray Cordial. Teresa Reynolds.
Here.
May now have approval of minutes and a second.
Motion to approve minutes.
Second.
Those were approved seven zero. Next I will go over the items that have been tabled tonight. R twenty-five dash fifty-four has been tabled. R twenty-five dash fifty-five has been tabled. B twenty-five dash sixty-seven has been tabled. And B twenty-five dash seventy-four has also been tabled. Speaking of table items, we'll begin tonight's agenda reviewing items that were tabled in last month's meeting. First one we'll review is R twenty-five dash forty-one Robinson Properties Limited Partnership, L L P. This is a request to a couple of things MF sixteen to a PUD. We'll also be looking at the large scale and then we'll also be looking at two variances, one to reduce the minimum size of the PUD, the other to reduce parking and landscape requirements. This is presented by ISG.
Good evening Chairman and Commissioners. My name is TJ Wells with ISG and this is my colleague Ryan King. We are the engineer and architect for these projects. This item and the next item on your agenda are two items that are considered in the development size as together, presented here tonight because they do not touch and so therefore we have two items before you. We do have representation from the development team here, other project partners as well. So as we look at what I'm going to refer to as Ford Avenue South, six point seven acres overall, this is MF sixteen to a PUD. One of the variances for this is for the reduction of PUD from ten acres minimum to the six point seven. And again, the reason for that is because if we look at that with the adjacent development, you know, we're going to be around eighteen, twenty, twenty acres overall. Additionally, there are site constraints on this development that did not fit nicely in the MF sixteen zoning bucket overall. Most of the development items are meeting that. This site is showing seventy-eight units overall, three-story building. We are stepping the ends of the structure to create some buffering and screening from the adjacent single-family to the west. Another variance that we're looking at is reduction in our perimeter landscaping requirements and that's because really our belief and intent of that landscaping guidance is to buffer the parking. But if you notice, we've got the buildings fronting the street and that's providing the buffering of the parking lot. We are going to have foundation plannings and everything around the structure. There is also a Waters of the U.S. Spring Creek channel on the frontage on the north side of this south parcel that would be cost prohibitive to lose. It's also the headwaters of Spring Creek, right? And so something that we want to preserve as the community of Springdale overall. Additionally, onsite amenities are going to include a playground, grills and picnic areas and an open space, play field where you can play catch, play soccer, kick the soccer ball around, get kids outside. Additionally, there's amenities integrated into the building facade and structure, mail structures, bike storage, potentially looking at internal and external bike storage options and maybe even some bike repair room if there's space inside the building. As far as the south side goes, that's the main objectives here. Any questions regarding the south side before I dive into the north?
Anything to add? I would just, Ryan King here, Architect of the ISG, just add that we're intentionally breaking up and you'll see a common theme in the north and south side that we are intentionally breaking up the parking into blades so we don't have a sea of parking but breaking that up as much as possible.
Thank you. Staff comments?
Asking the Chairman if it would be helpful for Commissioners if they did an overview of both since both of these, they need to be voted on separately but they are related. If it would be helpful if they did an overview or if you want to just dive into the details of just the south one first.
Commissioners, any comments?
I would like both together if possible.
Yeah, if you don't mind, just kind of light touch just like you did on the south, do the same for the north.
Yep, very happy to do that. So the north side overall is fourteen point nine six acres and it is to the north and west of the south side. And I didn't mention that there's two developers that are going on a joint development here, Mercy Housing and CDC. And we presented last month to y'all their objective and mission for affordable housing. This north side does have deed restrictions tied to it that it be utilized for affordable housing and also preservation of the natural resources of this area. The intent on the northern side is that it will be developed in multiple phases. Right now, today we are showing you phase one, which is on the southern half of it. This consists of sixty units, similar architecture feel and style to the buildings on the south again because they're complementary. This north side does include the leasing office and clubhouse area, which will be common to both developments. This site will also have a playground, dedicated picnic and grill spaces, a dedicated outdoor area for soccer, things like that. And we're also showing in the southeast corner, a space for potential dog park as another shared amenity between the two uses. This site has existing wet wetlands, right? So there's ponded wetlands and non-ponded wetlands. This site has both and our intent is that this development would preserve and enhance those, right? That they could be an amenity to the site, to the residents, but we also want to preserve them and upkeep them. The intent of the development is not to pass off that ownership and maintenance to the city of Springdale, but rather the development team would like to retain ownership and maintenance of that either through some form of partnership, potentially with the Illinois River watershed partners, or perhaps getting to them as land for them to own. Those details and arrangements are still being negotiated and worked out, but we have representatives from both parties here tonight in support of this project and an agreement. The intent around these wetlands is that there'd be natural surface trails for primarily grass covering, right? These are very similar trails that IRWP maintains throughout other areas of Springdale. Again, these are to be amenities to the natural existing landscape and so currently no lighting or any hard surface amenities are proposed adjacent to that use, but really just trying to get people out in nature, walking in and among it. We are trying to implement as many LID stormwater practices throughout the site as we possibly can and we're going to partner with IRWP in reviewing those, whether they're going to be done onsite or potentially on these open space parcels. So as I mentioned on this one, sixty units on this north, this existing zoning is A1 to a PUD. This one does not have the variance of the PUD size, oh, I guess the other variance we're requesting is parking, parking on both. The funding mechanism that these developments are trying to pursue is through ADFA and our parking count falls to either one point six or one point eight stalls per unit, which is kind of right in the middle of Springdale's requirement and ADFA's requirement. And our development team believes that this is sufficient parking to support this project and meet the goals and objectives of the city.
Anything else on the north side?
No, just naturally I want to speak to Architecture just a bit, but understanding that the finished materials that are selected and the colors that's being proposed here are intentional to relate to the site. We've got kind of wheat color brick to relate to the natural surrounding of the grass within the wetlands. We've got kind of that grayish tone to relate to the bark of the trees and obviously more of the wood tones there that relate to the trees and the canopies, et cetera, around there. So we're being very intentional not only about the building and the site design, whether it's the configuration and or materials.
Thank you for that. Chair, to your report.
So I'll start with comments on the rezoning, but then I think we should move to comments for the large scale because we'll actually need to vote on the variance and prior to the rezoning. But for this rezoning, the first one we are hearing is the south. So these projects, they were tabled last month and I really appreciate it. It was due to some of the lack of details just surrounding the amenities and the common open space. So I want to thank the applicants for speaking to us last month, coming back with a much stronger package. The site amenities, the playground and picnic area and everything that you've included, I don't think staff has any concerns. We're happy maybe other than aside from maybe the proposed location of the dog park. But because this is a planned unit development, that open space aspect is a cornerstone of PUDs and so ultimately we need clarity on how these areas are going to be defined, used and most importantly, just maintained over time. So while we anticipate whether it's a watershed conservation easement or some type of formal maintenance agreement, whatever that end product looks like, we know that what is needed is a clear long-term maintenance plan that needs to be approved by our engineering department. And our priority is that this development doesn't just function as apartments but as an actual community and so those elements are very important to us. But for the rezoning, the rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan and is recommended for approval pending any requested revisions to the development plan. Protect the positive aspects of the neighborhood character throughout the city and appropriate locations for single-family and multifamily residential development should be provided based on accessibility, site suitability, utility availability, neighborhood compatibility and environmental factors. And we listed some PUD-specific comments that were pretty much identical for both the north and the south. I'm not going to go through each and every one of them because some of them are the loose ends that are yet to be determined with that area. I think that what we did need, at least for the amenities, was maybe just expand that section within the detailed plan, just highlighting just a few more details of those particular amenities, as much detail as we possibly have at this point, even size and placement. And then before voting on the rezoning, we really should address the parking variance and the size of the PUD previous to the rezoning vote.
Any further staff comments about the south project?
If you would like, we could go into large scale and then just vote for every element of that south side project. Is that...
Yeah, I mean, I think because it's a PUD, I think we need to hear comments about the large scale. I think it helps Commissioners have follow-up questions since they're combined.
We'll start with the south. So there isn't really too much on the southern development, but there is a pretty interesting easement that we'll need information on like a timeline for vacating it. I understand that there might be some other utilities that are run through that area for the south, so we'll just need to figure that out as we move forward. And then obviously the amenities, we'll just need to work through those as well.
Most of my comments are in regard to the operation and maintenance plan, conservation easement that we are working through. So detailing things like stormwater BMPs, final amenity package for the open space, who owns it, who maintains it, short-term and long-term maintenance, information about what is allowed, what is not allowed, extent and location of undisturbed buffer zones. And then I had some notes on the development plan for markup. And then last comment is submit copies of state and federal permits prior to construction. And that's pretty much north and south for me.
Thank you, Katie. Any public comments about this PUD before us? Commissioners, any questions? I have a couple. One, the parking, do you know how many, I think what I remember reading in the packet, you have one, two and three bedrooms. Do you know what the mix of those are for the project?
Can you scan forward to that slide?
And mainly I'm interested in the three-bedroom, like is it ten percent of the project, twenty percent, you know, that type of?
I do not remember. I'd be lying to say it if I even guessed right here, so. I do know we made a conscious effort from our initial discussions with Springdale and understanding the importance of three bedrooms, so we hiked those up and brought those up, which did help our analysis for our parking as well. So we did bring those up from the original time. I do not have the numbers offhand.
I guess the request for reduction in parking, I'm normally for that. Matter of fact, I'm almost always for that, but I just want to be careful, single bedrooms, two bedrooms, I think parking can be minimalized, but we started doing a lot of three-bedrooms. I think that we got to assume that there's probably two cars to that situation, so that's why I'm asking that question. The other question I had was when you mentioned the wetlands and the conservation part, I think you mentioned two options that you were looking at. One is how Illinois River Watershed or something about ilk kind of partner with you, take care of it. The other was talk about maybe selling it. I don't know if you meant like the Northwest Arkansas.
Transfer.
Council trust or trust, land trust?
Transfer of ownership of the parcel to Illinois River Watershed Partnership rather than the development team.
Sure.
Owning it, entering into an agreement, I guess is the two potential paths.
Yeah, I guess my only statement is I think, to me, that could be the best part of this project outside of the housing that you're delivering. So I'd love to see you guys have a really good solid plan. I know it may take some time to get there, whether that be with Illinois River Watershed, who's done some great rain gardens in the area many times, or if it's the Northwest Land Trust who also does conservation, land that they own, you could give it over to them. They've been helpful in other projects, but I think my comment would be just love to see you guys work through that and get a real solid plan. The only other comment I had, are we, I'm assuming, but I want to ask the question, are we planning, as you mentioned bikes, are we planning to connect to Dean's Trail, which leads to downtown Springdale? Because I think that's a vital part of this project too. When I say connect, I think the connection may already be pretty much there, but I just want to be, you know, are we being intentional about connecting to the Dean's Trail and through signage, wayfinding or whatever? Is that something you guys have looked at or considered or would consider?
I don't think we've looked at it in great detail to have definition of what any signage or anything like that could look like that, but in discussions with our development team, it's something that we would be very open to entertaining, correct? Yep.
Thank you. If there are no other further questions, Commissioners, y'all want to take these first two variances together or separate?
Mark, we do have the breakdown of the bedrooms.
Oh, thank you.
By the way, there's ten three-bedroom units on the south.
Out of how many?
Out of seventy-eight.
Okay. So Michael, this is over about fifteen percent then. Thank you, Katie. Commissioners, do you want to take the variances together or separately?
I'm fine together.
Okay. So this variance request to reduction of minimum size of PUD from our standard ten to just over six acres, I believe, and then a reverence of reduction of parking and landscape requirements. This will be called for the vote. Call for the vote. That passes eight zero. Next, we'll take the large scale. Sorry, the rezoning will be requests to rezone this from MF sixteen to PUD. This will be a call for the vote as well.
Call for vote.
That passes eight zero as well. Final vote on the south portion of this project will be the large scale. This will be motion subject to staff comments.
Motion subject to staff comments. Second.
That passes eight zero. Are there any staff comments regarding the north section?
For the rezoning for Florida Avenue Flats North, this rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan and is recommended for approval pending any request of revisions to the development plan. Protect the positive aspects of the neighborhood character throughout the city. Appropriate locations for single-family and multifamily residential development should be provided based on accessibility, site suitability, utility availability, neighborhood compatibility and environmental factors. And the comments that I had regarding the entire development remain the same for the north too about the amenities and open space.
Any further staff comments?
In addition to the standard planning comments, we just need that finalized package for the amenities and then we're all set.
Same comments for the north side.
Thank you. Any public comment regarding this PUD request? Any questions from the Commissioners? Can you speak to the Tom Carroll subdivision lots nine, ten, A, ten, B, eleven and twelve? Just can you speak to that, what you're looking for there and why you're asking for it?
Yeah, so this is, there's five existing parcels that are platted as the Tom Carroll subdivision and basically we need to replat this area. We are trying to remove the wetlands outside of the parcels that will be residential and that's due to the funding agency requirements that Waters of the U.S. would not be within parcels that are going to be funded this way. So we have to re-slice the property. We do have five parcels, parcel one and parcel two is what we're proposing is developing. Parcel two being, or five, sorry, two and five. Two is phase one, parcel five is future phase to the north, so.
Thank you for that. Again, Commissioners, this will be, first we'll take the variances and the waiver. The waiver will be motion to forward to City Council with the recommendation to deny approve.
And this is a waiver for a future street that's on the master street plan, but we don't see the need for it right now, but the right-of-way was dedicated.
Thank you for that clarity. I need a motion and second to either approve or deny this waiver request.
Motion to forward to City Council to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
That passes eight zero. And when you look at the variance for reduction of parking and landscape requirements, that's a big call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
That passes eight zero. Next is a replat of the lots nine, ten, A, ten, B, eleven and twelve. This will be motion subject to staff comments.
Motion.
So moved.
Second.
That passes eight zero. Next is to rezone from A1 to a PUD. This will be called for the vote.
I will need help from ID.
Shannon, can you hear us?
We got.
That passes eight zero. Thank you, gentlemen. We're looking forward to this.
Yep.
Oh, yes, right. Sorry. I'm just ready to get this project moving forward, right? We tabled it last month, ready to get this thing done. Last is large scale, the north. This will be motion subject to staff comments.
Motion subject to staff comments. Second.
That passes eight zero. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Hold on, let me real quickly go over the next steps. So some of these have to go to City Council, some don't. Just so you know, the rezonings and the waiver are going to go to the September twenty-third and staff will prepare those ordinance and the resolution for the waiver that go. The replat could go as soon as next Tuesday on the ninth. Let us know if you want all those projects to go together or separate, but the replat, we will need you to draft the ordinance and submit it. Okay? All right. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is C twenty-five dash zero seven Homes for Halos LLC presented by Allison Theobald. This is a request to use unit four and then SF two.
Good evening.
Hello.
We're so excited. I first just want to jump in really briefly and just say why we're doing this project. We're so excited about it, mainly because my husband Sean and I, we just have a passion for the elderly community.
Could you tell us your names? Could you tell us your names, please?
Yeah, Allison Theobald and Sean Theobald. Sorry, I just got excited. We just have a real passion for the elderly and for the geriatric population, so we just were talking about how can we make our dreams, combine our dreams together and we came up with this and it's a new concept here in Arkansas to do a home-style assisted living. It's very intimate care, very good quality of care for the geriatric population. So we're really excited to kind of get this conditional use so we can move forward with this project. We're really, really excited about. So did you want to speak to the what we're doing?
Sure. So Sean Theobald here, I'll trade your sides. We did want to thank all of you for being very supportive since the very get-go Commissioner and Chairman for support us in this project. So kind of the what behind this is we've contracted with one of number one firms for residential assisted living and the goal is, the concerns that I've seen being a nurse in the field for twenty years is that the geriatric population, a lot of the organizations will do a fifteen resident to one caregiver ratio or twenty-five to one and our focus is more of the experience, so our kind of theme is heavenly care. This is awkward, you guys are intimidating. This is like a whole new experience for us, so.
Heavenly care, heavenly living.
Yes. To care for those elderly patients and make it heavenly experience. So we just, we've seen a lot of elderly patients not cared for and experiencing falls. So our goal is to do a five to one or six to one ratio and really push for independence and the focus is on memory care for those elderly population.
Thank you both. Staff comments?
So for this conditional use, the ingress and egress to the property and the proposed structures is acceptable. The off-street parking and the loading areas where required. So this site, you guys show that you'll provide a total of seven parking spots, five of which are required for this use, one being designated as ADA. Right now for these, for this use, you're required three parking spaces per residential unit. The refus and service areas are acceptable. Utilities with reference to locations, availability and compatibility is acceptable. You've already been working with our office for septic details and getting all that squared away. Screening and buffering with reference to type, dimension and character is acceptable. There's no screening requirement. Compatible uses, however, that Deer Creek subdivision, they do have rear fences, I think, that already provides a screening. A sign, if any signs are not allowed in the residential one, that would require a variance A sign, if any signs are not allowed in the residential one, um, that would require a variance to allow that. The yard requirements and other open space, um, there is, um, um, in the SF two, you cannot exceed 40% of the lot with building coverage and the site plan is compliant even with that, um, with the proposed expansion. The size and the shape of the site is acceptable. The proposed landscaping meeting all the requirements is acceptable. Um, and the general compatibility with other adjacent properties is acceptable.
Thank you. Any public comments about this use unit request? Any, uh, comments from the commissioners? If none, this will be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Thank you. That passes eight zero. Thank you both.
Thank you. Staff will prepare the ordinance that's going to go to city council on September 23rd. You're encouraged to attend, but not required to, okay?
Sounds good, thank you.
Next up is B 25 dash 49 Jose Cruz Torres Sierra. This is a variance request for driveway expansion presented by Jose. We'll move Jose to the end of the agenda, I believe he stepped out. Next up is a rezoning request, R 25 dash 52 from Amanda Alicia Berganza. This is request to rezone from MF 12 to C2 presented by Jonathan Bajona.
Good evening, uh, my name is Jonathan Bajona. The petition before you is to rezone a portion of this, uh, parcel of land at 2101 West Huntsville Avenue from MF 12 to C2. About an acre of, uh, of that, uh, parcel is MF 12. The remainder is, uh, C2 already. It's a total of 2.9 acres. So the, um, petition is to rezone to match the remainder of the, uh, parcel of land from MF 12 to C2.
Thank you. Staff comments?
So as he stated, most of the subject tract is currently zoned commercial. This current request is to rezone that small portion that is still residential, um, in the southeast to commercial to be consistent with those surrounding contexts. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan and is recommended for approval. To assure adequate and out, land allocation for commercial areas of sufficient size and improper locations and encourage the development of light to medium intensity commercial development along arterial streets that provide adequate setbacks and buffering to adjacent residential neighborhoods.
Is there any public comment regarding this rezoning request? Any comments from commissioners? If none, this is a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Thank you. That passes eight zero. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to city council on September 23rd.
Okay, thank you.
Next up is rezoning request, R 25 dash 53 MHC International Trading, Inc. This is a request from C2 to C5 presented by Will Kestrom. Possibly someone else.
As I say, I'm not Will. My name is Caitlin Gibbs, I work with Will, um, standing in, in for him today. Um, I'm going to keep it really simple, we're just asking for a rezone from a C2 to a C5. I'm here to answer any questions that y'all have. But my understanding is that, uh, this falls within the future land use plans for this area and that the property to the west of this area is already highly commercialized for the most part.
Thank you. Staff comments?
A development plan has been submitted for site modifications at this site. And while the scope does not require full site conformity, the proposed upgrades do represent a positive benefit for Springdale. As the location is situated on a state highway, staff find that this request for higher intensity commercial zoning is appropriate. We have no opposition. The request seeks C5 zoning to allow the open, uh, display retail consistent with the surrounding commercial uses along North Thompson Street and is buffered from nearby residential residences by Woods Drive. The rezoning request is in keeping with the comprehensive land use, with the following goals and policies of comprehensive land use plan and is recommended for approval. Promote the viability of older commercial properties as well as new commercial development and encourage the development of regional commercial areas that accommodate a variety of wholesale retail service and office uses where the highest traffic volumes and greatest utility demands can be served and more extensive outdoor display of materials will be expected and permitted and have frontage and/or access to highways and I-49.
Thank you. Any public comments regarding this rezoning request? Any comments from commissioners? If none, this is a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Thank you. That passes eight zero.
Thank you all.
Next up is a conditional use section. This is, uh, first up is C 25 dash zero nine Casa de la Tribu de Leon de Julia. I really messed that up, I'm sure. Uh, this is a request into use unit 42 in a C2 zoning presented by Francisco. Hello.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Catherine Lopez, I am one of the, I'm here representing the church. Uh, this is, uh, Francisco, a little bit of, of English, but I'll be here to translate if you have any questions.
Thank you.
Uh, compré el edificio el día en el 2023.
Okay, so he purchased a building back in, uh, in, 2023?
Para iglesia.
For a church?
Y este, tuvimos cuatro meses nomás este servicios.
Uh, and they were only open for about four months?
Y mi esposa enfermó.
And then his wife, uh, got ill?
Y la tuvimos que parar.
So they had to stop, they had to stop, um, the church.
Pero cuando lo compramos tenía permiso de ocupancia.
And when the, they, they, uh, got a permit to be functioning as a church. But it expired. And so he has rented out the building and that is where we come in. And we're here to see if we can get that, that permit to be, uh, an established church there.
Thank you. Staff comments?
Um, I'll preface this was, this site has, um, has had a, uh, institutional use as a church historically for, for many years. So I'm going to go through some of the, uh, standards and specifications that we need for this. So the ingress and egress to the property and the proposed structures, um, is unacceptable at the moment, but there is a solution. Right now, this is actually a landlocked piece. Um, and so we will need an access easement, which, which will require cooperation with the neighboring property to the north. That, that commercial, um, piece of property that, that fronts Huntsville just to, to ensure that you have access back there. The off-street parking and loading, loading areas where required is acceptable. Um, at commercial sites, you can have up to 50% of off, off-site parking and it looks like you have that. And we, you provided in agreement, um, with that commercial business to the north. Refuge and service areas acceptable. Utilities with reference to location, availability, and compatible, compatibility is acceptable. Screening and buffering, um, is acceptable. Sign, if any, um, unknown. The size and shape of the site is acceptable. Yard requirements, um, and other open space requirements, um, not applicable. And proposed landscaping meeting the requirements of this ordinance, unknown. And the general compatibility with adjacent properties is acceptable. So I guess I have a couple of questions. Number one, is there any landscaping? And then the second, is there a sign proposed?
Uh, very minimal landscaping, uh, it's very small. Um, and as opposed to the sign, we have, um, yet to discuss that, but there will be one that will be put up. There, I believe there is a sign there already, it's just been painted over.
Okay, I would just encourage call the city and make sure.
Okay.
Any public comments regarding this use unit request? Is all this park, is it gravel currently?
No, no, it is, it is paved, yes.
Okay, thank you. And do you understand the easement comment that the staff director just mentioned to you?
Um, if you would like to explain that, that would be great, thank you.
And we have, um, Katie from our engineering department, she's, uh, she's probably better at explaining it. And, and we can also provide some guidance and assistance on, on getting to that, that end goal.
So what we're looking for basically is a legal document that says that you are allowed to drive through your neighbor's property to get to yours. Since you guys have that shared parking agreement already, it doesn't, and this has been, you know, going on for some years, it doesn't seem like it should be an issue to get their signature. So we have a template that we can use, it just kind of spells that out and then we can work on putting that together and give that to y'all to go get their signature, um, and then you'll be good to go.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
So if there's no questions, this will be call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Thank you. That passes eight zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Staff will prepare a resolution that goes to city council on the 23rd.
Next up is C 25 dash 10 Ray Dubs Soul Food and More. This is a use unit 44 request and a C2. There's also a variance for utility requirement for use unit 44 presented by Raymond and Crystal Washington.
Hi.
Hello.
Hi, we're Raymond and Crystal Washington. And yes, we would like to have a use unit 44 for our Ray Dubs soul food, uh, food trailer. And, um, and also we're requesting a variance for the utility requirements for this trailer. There's a picture of the truck right there. I'm not sure what all I need to present to you. What kind of questions do you have for us?
Sure, uh, staff comments?
So staff comments for this, um, conditional use request. The ingress and egress to the property is acceptable. The off-street parking and loading areas where required is acceptable. Refuge and service areas are acceptable. The utilities with reference to locations, I listed unknown in the packet, but we know that you're, you're seeking a variance request in order to achieve that. The screening and, and buffering, um, not applicable, you have commercial around. The sign, if any, um, I don't know if there is, um, if you are seeking a sign other than on the food truck.
Possibly we would like a sign in the future.
And, um, the yard requirements and open space acceptable. Size and shape of the site acceptable. Landscaping not applicable. General compatibility is acceptable. Another one that I had mentioned at the time, um, of review was what was the size? You may have verified with that, our, with our staff already, but the size of the food truck itself.
Um, yes, I'm sorry, I don't know it by heart, let me just look at my picture. I believe that it is a seven by 15. The truck itself.
And is there going to be any lighting on site?
There's lighting on the outside of the truck, yes. That's part of its charm, those little light bulbs are so cute.
There they are. Any public comment regarding this use unit request? Commissioners, any questions? Alf two, uh, I believe I've seen this truck before, so, um, have, have you been operating this location, uh, in the past for the traditional three hours or whatever temporary usage is, okay?
Yes, we have, uh, previously we were just right up the road in Fayetteville, so, uh, Ray Dubs is kind of a name that part of the community is, is aware of and, you know, he pretty much promotes love in the community and tries to give the, the people who come and visit just a real family vibe.
Sure.
Yeah.
And then what is your variance for utility requirement? Can you explain what your variance request is for?
Well, there is an electrical plug that we can connect to, but that is part of the North Athletic Center, the Northwest Athletic Center, that's part of their utility. So we're just asking for permission to use that.
I'm assuming they're okay with it?
They are.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Yes.
Commissioners, no questions, we'll take the variance first. This will be called for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Thank you. That passes eight zero. Then the use unit 44 for this mobile vending in the C2, this is also a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Thank you. That also passes eight zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Staff will prepare, um, a resolution that goes to city council for the conditional use request on September 23rd.
Okay, thank you.
Next up are preliminary plaits, replats, and final plaits. First item we'll review is RP 25 dash 10 Westfield subdivision phase one. This is lot 1A and 1BA presented by Gonzalez Family Revocable Trust.
Hi, my name is Josh Allen, I'm representing the Gonzalez.
Do we have an, I apologize, Mr. Allen, do we have an authorization?
Yeah. She's here, Marlene's here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Please continue.
We're just looking to combine two lots.
Staff comments?
Um, in addition to standard comments on this one, just need to update the street tag for the Elm Springs right of way. You'll see it says 80, the proper right of way is shown, just the tag needs to be updated. Update the vicinity map to have Daleen Street in the right location. Correct the graphic scale. And then we need a resolution just stating that the property owner has authority to sign on behalf of their LLC.
And I had a question, there's a drainage easement that's called out on the south side of that property. Um, and I didn't, I didn't see that in the original plat, is that existing or proposed? Or I'm not sure what that easement is for. So we kind of need to nail that down. And then dedicate appropriate right of way, which I think Nate says that you, you did have the right right of way, it was just labeled incorrectly.
Thank you. Any public comments regarding this replat request? Please step up, state your name and address. Thank you.
I'm Jerry Cook, I live at 805 Betty Street, which is right around the corner. Back, uh, years ago, I fought this piece of property to have it zoned commercial and had it done residential office. They came back to make it zoned commercial. Whenever y'all went out and posted your sign on the piece of property to get it to be zoned commercial, that sign, I took pictures of it, was posted on the wrong piece of property. It was on the property next door, so it was never posted properly whenever y'all asked for it to be zoned commercial. The property owner next door has already went through, started cutting down trees on our property line and he's had it marked now. Come to find out, he's cut down my neighbor's trees on his property, which I'm encouraging to take him to court. And he's tried to take down the trees behind my house, which on June 2nd of this year, my wife was in the shower, my dogs were going crazy. I come to find out that the guys behind my fence and my property easement that I pay taxes on, I had to get the police involved that morning. Then they retaliate at my job, trying to cost me my job. I have a problem with this.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question? Sir, would you come back up to the mic?
Yes, sir.
Can you better articulate, I don't think I understand what your, what your concern is with them.
Well, originally, whenever.
Replanting this into one parcel.
Okay, so the property behind our house, we didn't want commercial property right behind our house. We've been there 27 years, the moors on the corner has been there longer than I've been there.
Okay, but my understanding is they're just asking to replat this into one parcel, right, not a grid?
Right, but what I'm saying too is I'm going back to the original when it was residential office, when I worked with Jeff Harper on this property, making it residential office. Then they asked to have it rezoned to commercial and y'all came out there and posted the sign on the wrong piece of property and then made it commercial, the wrong lot.
So what you're saying is you don't have an issue with him replating this property, you have a problem with a past incident?
Well, it's the Gonzalez, it's, it's the gentleman there. I mean, he just showed up on June 2nd to my job to retaliate, try to cost me my job. My executive director was nice enough to call me into the office to let me know what was going on. I've got it on videotape.
Okay.
But he's cut down my neighbor's trees, he's tried to cut down my trees. I've got pictures of their truck parked on my property.
Yeah, that's not necessary.
Sir, yeah, this is, so I understand where you're coming from, uh, I can tell you're frustrated, but that's a civil deal. All we're looking at tonight is. but that's a civil deal, all we're looking at tonight is to replat this from two lots to one.
We were also told it was going to be a doctor's office, not a strip mall.
Well, we're not, we're not even talking about that, we're just talking about combining two, two lots into one.
What was sent to my house says strip mall, it don't say doctor's office.
I don't, I mean, right now, we're just talking about replat, it's not even a large-scale development or anything.
Just letting you know, I'm not very happy with this.
Understood, thank you. Any other public comment regarding this? Commissioners, any questions? If none, this will be motion subject to staff comments to replat this from one, two lots to, to one.
Motion, subject to staff comments.
Thank you, second, thank you. That passes eight zero, thank you.
If you, if you want this to be on next Tuesday's city, Mr. Allen, if you want this to be on next Tuesday's City Council agenda, we need the ordinance in our office by tomorrow close of business, okay? And if you need a template, reach out to our office.
Okay, thank you.
Next up is FP 25-09, Clayton Street Business Park. This is a final plat request, also includes a couple of variances, parking lot orientation and landscaping, presented by ESI.
Thank you, Jason Apple with ESI, two items, one's the final plat for the commercial subdivision, and then the variances are related to some non-large-scale development projects that are going on those lots, and so I'll answer any questions.
Staff comments?
Planning comments, we'll need to provide the invoice for the streetlights, we'll need to add a side setback distance if any of these lots are contiguous to residential districts, we're going to add that benchmark data once the pins are set, and then we do not recommend to leave lot 12 maintenance to the property owner via the pond certification, a long-term maintenance plan is needed, and we need to know who's going to retain that ownership and that we are also encouraging a POA with covenants to address this.
Engineering, submit final plat checklist items, complete punch list items from the final walkthrough, and on the notes, it's note three, it says all sidewalks are five feet or six feet, I think they're all five feet, so we can just remove that extra note. If Angela is extended north, is that cul-de-sac able to be reconfigured as a through street? And then we also have the question of who is maintaining the detention pond, will there be a POA, or can that pond be tied to a buildable lot?
There will be a POA.
Any public comments regarding this final plat? Any questions by commissioners regarding the variances or final plat? Can you explain a little bit, Jason, the parking lot orientation, landscaping, what hardships you have to ask for these variances?
So initially, when we brought this project forward, it's been a few years in the making, but it was, this was going to be a private street, and so we had parking between the road and the building frontage, right? So there's a requirement that you can't have more than 60% of your parking in the front facade, that's one of the variance requests, and also, we're just working with the city to make this a public street, so the potential is therefore through avenue in the future, is why it got changed to a public street. The landscaping, there's a couple of items, we've changed some varieties on some setbacks for perimeter landscaping, moved some trees around, same number of trees, and then a request for the removal of foundation landscaping along the sides and rear of these commercial buildings, we are providing it in the front of these buildings, so.
So is your statement, your landscaping is the same amount of landscaping, just arranged differently than our standard, is that what you're saying?
Yes, less the foundation landscaping portion.
So no?
Not the foundation landscaping, yes, sir.
This, the variances will be called for a vote, do we want to do them together or separate, commissioners?
Together.
Together. This will be called for the vote for both variances.
Call for the vote.
That passes eight zero. The final plat is motion subject to staff comments.
Motion subject to staff comments.
Second.
Thank you. That also passes eight zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We need the ordinance by close of business tomorrow, if you want to be heard Tuesday. Jason?
Next up is large-scale developments, first item is L 25-25, Marabella, is, has one variance request for landscape requirements, also presented by ESI.
Thank you, Jason Apple with ESI, we've got a large scale for a multifamily project. The landscaping variance is subject to, or it's, it's, it's a variance for perimeter landscaping, as you can see there on the kind of the southwest corner, we've moved those trees from the perimeter to a north side of the drainage easement there, other than that, I believe all the landscaping is in order.
Any public comment regarding this large scale? Any comments from commissioners? If none, we'll do a call for the vote for the variance of landscape requirements.
Call for the vote.
Thank you.
Mr. Claude, do y'all want staff comments?
Yeah, that'd be great, sorry about that.
Thank you. In addition to standard comments, opaque screening will be required on the east property line that borders that commercially zoned property. Please show all existing conditions, including the vegetation, so just delineate that existing tree canopy. Sheet one still states HVAC equipment will be roof-mounted, this will need to be removed, as y'all confirm that's not the case. Replace comment three on the cover page with the following note, and you can see this note, screenshot it in our memo. List the exterior materials to be utilized and the percentages on the elevations. To utilize the detention area as common open space, planning will require further amenities to approve, improve access and safety. Planning and engineering will need detail on the gravel sidewalk and suggest a more compact material to maintain an accessible walking surface. Planning suggests an accessible path to get to the new patio on the north side, and more planting along the patio areas along the north side of the property. If the private drive leading to and from Sunset is going to be utilized, entryway landscaping is required, and then crosswalk is required at the intersection of the private drives, so this is right on the phase line for phase one and two. And then ADA ramps, I just had a question on where there are ADA ramps by the ADA parking, might just be a thing that needs to be cleared up on the plans, but I did not see any on the sidewalks.
Engineering comments, submit approved RDOT permit prior to construction of the drive on 412. For that private drive, what street section is proposed and is on-street parking allowed? Does the drainage easement around the south swale contain the 100-year storm, and then did you guys figure out whether that stream was jurisdictional or not? If it is confirmed to be a tributary, then it would require a 25-foot undisturbed buffer on each side.
We're getting that clarified at this moment, we haven't received feedback on that yet, but we will prior to approval from staff.
Thank you.
Couple, couple other comments, just to.
Yeah, please.
Clarifications on, on the comments, exterior materials, we have over 50% brick material, the rest is hardy siding, so I believe we meet the percentages there, we'll get that clarified on the, on the actual elevations. The detention area is not used in the calculations for common open space, so we don't think those comments apply there, I think we provided a common open space exhibit, basically to show where we counted the, that open space, and I think there's a couple sidewalk options in here, we'll get with staff and make sure we're, we understand where those are, but other than that, we should be good.
Thank you. Let's try this again, call for the vote for the variance on landscape requirements. Voted, vote now, or forever hold your peace. That passes eight zero. Large scale, a motion subject to staff comments.
Motion subject to staff comments.
Second.
Thank you. That passes eight zero as well, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is public hearing, Form Based Code, FB 25-09, Stairsteppers LLC and Randy and Linda Southwood, this is a deviation for existing non-conforming encroachment to remain, presented by Stairsteppers LLC and Randy and Linda Southwood. And apparently Mike Gilbert.
And apparently the one that caused the mess, Mike Gilbert, 211 West Maple, I live on the east side of the duplex in question. I owned all of those properties at one time, had originally intended to demo the duplex, did the duplex and the house at 203 and build my house there, and then scope creep got the best of me, and I ended up redoing 211 instead. So I built the house for Randy and Linda Southwood on 203 and sold that property to them. There is a large pecan tree that's, that was basically on the property line of 203 and the duplex at 205, 207. Randy and I are best friends, are, you know, we do game night on Tuesday nights and whatnot, Linda wanted the tree in her backyard, I owned it all, I said, put your fence on this side of the tree and I'll quitclaim it to you, and never got around to quitclaiming it. Then I sold the duplex to Stairsteppers, disclosed to Stairsteppers that I had moved the property line or moved the fence, and we needed to quitclaim the property, that eight-foot strip of property over to the Southwoods, that was no issue for anybody. Then I hired a surveyor, and you know what happens when you hire a surveyor, right? They come down to the city and say, well, what do you guys want? Instead of doing what I hired him to do, which was create for me a legal description so that Stairsteppers could quitclaim that strip of land, and then it would have been pretty easy from that point, but the surveyor didn't do that, he came in and, and then he submitted that drawing, which actually shows a couple of encroachments on there. So the encroachments, I'll take from east to west, if you don't mind. The first one is the encroachment over the property line of the garage, or the carport, rather, on 207 Maple. I gave the city, without compensation, 10 feet of property along Main Street eight years ago, and the location of the garage on that side was known at that time, and, and then when we did the, when we put the porches on it, we basically knocked the walls out of the garages and then reshaped the roof a little bit so it would drain better, and, and so it's basically in a condition it's been in all the way from the time that we deeded that property to the city, and the road is in the exact same condition today. In fact, this weekend, I rented tobacco and I excavated the side of that street and put base in it because I managed to get the city to put it on the overlay, and it's going to get overlaid next week, and that's all going to get cleaned up and look real good, so that's, that's the highlight of that side. So that's the issue on the 207 property. On the, on the 203 property, I can just tell you this, I'm an idiot, that lot's 60 feet wide, that house is supposed to be 40 feet wide, and if you look, if you took the west property line and took it all the way up to the street, it looks like it would actually have encroached on both sides. So somehow or another, I built Randy and Linda a little bit bigger house than what our plans showed, and I'm not exactly sure how I managed to accomplish that either because I had a surveyor pin the footings, but I had him pin them on the corporate, on the common property line and work to the west, so I'm not sure where that error occurred, but it did, and I'm responsible for both of those, and I don't know what the remedy of shaving a foot off of the house would be.
That's why we're here.
Maybe ask for forgiveness on that one. And then, and then on, on that shed, I made a deal with Randy to build him a shed and trade him for his pickup truck, and I said, where do you want it? And he told me, and I didn't even think about setbacks on it, so if we need to get underneath that one, it's built on, Mark, it's built on four piers with brackets that then have six-by-sixes on it, so if we had to, we could pull the floor up, cut those off, lift it up and move it somewhere if we had to, but I don't think we really want to do that. And then, while I've got the floor, I'll say, that's the three things I'm responsible for, and I can't say anything at all about the city wanting some additional right-of-way. I mean, last time I replatted it, I gave y'all land, and now we're trying to just correct a little fence line issue.
If we make it, if we make it a private drive, we wouldn't require any more right-of-way, but then the city wouldn't maintain it or do the overlay planned.
No, I'm talking about Maple now.
Oh, with, with an updated master street plan, it may, and at the end of 2023, so starting in January of 2024, we started implementing a new master street plan, which does require a little more right-of-way, so anything submitted after that point, you are going to see that request, just adhere to today's master street plan.
Well, I don't have the authority to grant it to you anyway, so I'm just questioning it because I already gave that land away once, and nothing's happened with it, and, and if, I'm sure that both of them would give it to the city if the city would get the speed limit down to 25 miles an hour, you live on that street, you know just like I do how bad it is. Anyway, thank you, but if we can find a way to remedy these without destroying the Southwoods house, that would be very helpful, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Staff comments?
No, this, this is not an eight, sometimes we see these requests, especially with renovation projects to older neighborhoods, when people try to upcycle structures, and if the fire department had an issue with it, we would have already requested that it be taken down. Steve, is there any, any, sorry, Mr. Goss, Fire Marshal, is there any concern with, or Ed, Building Department?
Any public comment regarding this, or a statement of affairs?
This falls into a tradesman error.
Tradesman error, yeah, is there a fine for that?
No.
No? Okay.
It happens.
Commissioner, any comments? Here or none, this will be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Thank you. That passes eight zero, Mike, you got a pass from the commission, hopefully the council will treat you as well.
Thank you, hopefully the property owners will give you what you want.
Next up is board adjustment, first is B 25-60, Marcos Mendoza, this is a variance for a reduction of front setback from 30 foot to 25, presented by Laura Aronda.
Good evening, I'm Marcos Mendoza.
I'm Alma, I'm his daughter.
We just here for requests for reduction of setback, 30 feet from, to 25 feet. We built a deck, I mean, we didn't build a deck, we just, it was a existing deck there, we just took it down, it was in very bad condition, and we just did the, the new one. But we find out the, for some reason, there's not, you need some requirements or something, so that's why we requested the, the setback.
I, I live in a, sorry.
No, go ahead.
I actually live on the property, and I have little kids, and I just didn't think it was safe for my kids.
Sure, thank you. We have pictures of the actual deck, I don't know if we have, it'll have any. Do what? Yeah, not the new one. So my memory, when I looked at this, the existing deck is on the side of the house, this is a corner lot, as you see there, and they built a new deck in the same place the old, the old deck was.
That's correct.
And the only issue, I think, is there's a large easement that runs, you see that dash line to the left of the house, if you will, that just nicks or comes really close to the deck, and so I just, as long as you, I guess you understand that if for some reason they need to remove your deck to handle that easement area, they may have to do that. they need to remove your deck to handle that easement area, they may have to do that.
Yeah, I don't have, I don't think I have any issues on the, I mean, please, on the way. But I just don't want it to remove it.
Yeah, understood.
It's not necessary to do it, you know?
Understood. I just want to make sure you knew the way easements work is if you have anything in the easement and they need to move it, they're going to have to move it.
Yeah, I'm.
It may never happen, but if it does, just know. So if there's no question, is there a public comment regarding this variance for a reduction? If there is none, any commissioners? If there are no questions from you, this will be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Thank you. That passes eight zero. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Y'all have a good night.
You as well.
Permit is ready to be picked up. You can pick it up tomorrow. Your building permit is ready to be picked up. You can pick it up tomorrow.
Next up is B twenty-five dash sixty-three, Thompson Building Parking Lot. This is a variance for frontage landscaping, presented by Bates and Associates. We still talk about this property?
Yes, we are. Adam Muntz with Bates and Associates. Yeah, so with this property, so the main reason that we're requesting it is just because of the existing, existing utilities kind of in that area. That's the southern lot. Can we show that one? Is that? Yeah, okay. Yeah, and just because the proximity to the R dot right of way right there, that's kind of like the main request for it. Just because that drainage easement, we just don't want to encroach anymore on that drainage easement that we need, or that drainage area that we need to.
Any public comment regarding this variance request? So are you showing on these, can you explain what these red, are you, are these images what you're adding or taking away or not included? Can you comment toward that?
Yes, yeah, so that's, that, we're still providing landscaping. Now we're just not providing landscaping along the frontage of the road portion specifically. Just because the overhead power lines kind of would impede it. We can propose some kind of shrubbery to kind of propose in that area, but nothing tall.
Thank you for that. Are there any questions with commissioners? If none, this will be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Thank you. That passes eight zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is B twenty-five dash sixty-four, Mancia Properties Parking Lot. A few variances to discuss. Variance for reduction of minimum distance between paved area and property line. Reduction of minimum driveway width from twenty-four foot to twenty. Variance for perimeter landscaping on west and south side. And variance from parking area design regulations for raised curb, presented by Bates and Associates. There she is.
Adam Muntz with Bates and Associates again. So with this property, it's kind of an existing building, which is why the, kind of the number of variances. So with the first one, minimum distance between the paved areas and property lines, because of the location of the building, it's not really allowing us to put in a twenty-four-inch drive, especially with that separation from that property line, which is why we're kind of proposing it right along that property line. There is really no way for us to even trim back any of the existing building or do any sort of adjustment with that to be able to allow a date twenty-four-inch drive. Same thing with the second one, just because that twenty-four inch or that twenty-inch reduction, that's why we're only allowed to propose that twenty inch. But within the actual parking stalls, you have that twenty-four inches in between. So you're able to back out, move freely. And then for the perimeter landscaping, because it is right on the long property line, we're unable to propose that perimeter landscaping on that western side. And then on that southern side, there, there is a kind of a thing in the works with the city. They're eventually going to propose the whole Robinson kind of west along the highway. They're going to improve it. And so we're not proposing any kind of greenery addition, just because that's going to take place within that. They're going to put some landscaped islands, they'll put some greenery. And we're already in the process of proposing a waiver with them where we just pay a fee in lieu in that portion.
And if you stay on that map, Nate, will you? So the city council actually heard that waiver request. Will you go back one more to like the zoning or land use? So council approved fee and lieu, but the applicant agreed to pay last week at city council. And if you see that little stretch of Robinson, the white one in between seventy-one and Pleasant, that area, which is not a state highway, is on, on the bond projects to be improved at some point.
Thank goodness.
And then the parking area design for a raised curb. So the drainage kind of on this area is sloped from the north to south. So if we put a raised curb, we're kind of blocking off that area. We're not going to allow any kind of off-site water. And I know it's not a significant area that's draining from the north, but I just, we just don't want to cause any kind of ponding and also try and put it on any kind of neighboring property at all. We are proposing curb stops though, just in case, so.
That's a good idea. Is the back parking lot, when I say back, behind the building, is that accessible off of the side street? Or you have to come, you see what I'm asking?
You'd have to come from the back drive. So it's mainly just for the tenants in that area, just to come into the buildings.
Got it. Any other staff comments? Any public comment regarding these variances? Any questions from commissioners? Hearing none, this is a call for the vote. If you guys want to take this separately, let me know. Otherwise, it'll be a call for the vote for all variances. The way I look at it, this is trying to do the basic again with existing property and waiting for it to get somewhat improved by some bonds as well.
Call for the vote for all of them.
Thank you. That passes eight zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is B twenty-five dash sixty-five, Alicia Belby. This is a variance for increased fence height from three foot to six foot, presented by Jesse Collins.
Good evening, chairman and commissioners. My name is Jesse Collins. I apologize, my nesting partner couldn't be here. We're having our fireplace torn out and rebuilt at the moment. In the past, as you can see, we've had a pool on the side of our yard. We were unaware of fencing ordinances that were required. And this, after the recent last storm that we had, we did get a violation notice for the fence line that runs parallel to Crocksdale. And there was a lot of overgrowth there. We have been working on it over the past year or so. When we received that notice, we pulled it back. And then we received a second violation notice about it not being under three feet along that fence line and the fencing requirement for the pool. The planning office has been extremely helpful in getting us taken this care of. We want to ask for a variance to raise the fence height from three feet to six feet. And we want to run it parallel to Midland from the corner of the house to the fence line that is, or the fence that's already there that runs parallel to Crocksdale. And we need it raised to six feet for the fencing requirement for a pool as three feet is not high enough for the fifty-four inches.
Thank you. Any staff comments?
Is there any sort of visibility concerns at all with this, Katie?
So is the fence that runs parallel to Concord, or sorry, Crocksdale, is that six foot currently?
No, that is currently a three-foot chain link fence. And in the future, we do want to make that up to where we want to build the fence, parallel to Midland. We'll reapply to change that to a six foot as well. That, the fence line that we're proposing or we want to have built is more than thirty feet back from Midland. There is a stop sign at the corner of Midland and Crocksdale where Midland has the right of way. So if there's any safety concerns, it seems like it's pretty well justified.
Yeah, this is one of those unique where the house frontage is not necessarily, you know, it gets kind of confusing. But, so just so I'm clear, you're going, you're asking to do a six-foot privacy fence?
Yes, sir.
That parallels Midland, that is tucked just behind the front of the house to meet the existing three-foot chain link fence that you currently have.
To the side of the house, the house front actually faces.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any public comment regarding this request? Any commissioning comments?
So that section along Crocksdale is going to, is everything in red going to be new? Or you're just?
The, the section that's parallel to Crocksdale, currently it's a three-foot fence. We have, we've been remodeling and updating the property. We thought we'd have enough to be able to build that fair, tear that fence down and build it. Currently, as it is right now, both my nesting partner and I just work way too much and it's going to take either a landscaping or a company to come out and clear a lot of trees. There is a lot of trees and growth on that section. So currently it's just a three-foot fence. And we are aware that we'll have to reapply to have that six-foot fence built. So it would just be a six-foot fence that tees in two or three-foot chain link fence at the moment.
Is there a timeframe on when we approve this, meaning so they don't have to come back?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
When do you plan on, are you, when do you plan on installing this on the six-foot if?
The six-foot fence? If this is approved, I go home and let my nesting partner know and we'll probably go to Home Depots or Lowe's within the next day or so.
Are you seeking to wait or if the commissioners?
No, we're, we're looking to go ahead and, and build it as soon, as soon as we get the approval from you guys, if we get it.
For the additional, for the additional portion?
The additional portion, we are waiting on currently. Like I said, there's, there's more work that, prep work that needs to be done for it. And the planning office told us we will have to reapply for a variance for that additional section.
I guess my concern, if, if you got a ticket or some, not a ticket, but some sort of code, code violation, did I understand that correctly? That would still be there if the three-foot fence, is that correct? Or am I, the one parallel to Crocksdale?
Not sure. I had Nate, or Nate came out from planning office to kind of look at everything. The three-foot fence, as far as we understood it, when we got the first ordinance violation, we cleared back, well, it was after the, the storm that we had knocked some trees down in our neighborhood. City was going around making sure things were cleaned up. We had overgrowth that was actually over Crocksdale Street and they asked for all of that to be cleaned up, which we did. And then the second time, I think we actually had a complaint from a neighbor that that fence line wasn't cleared up enough. So they asked us to, from the corner of the property or at the intersection of Midland and Crocksdale, to drop everything to three feet or below, at least thirty feet back. And they did not say anything about us going beyond the thirty feet. So I apologize for not really answering your question.
I might have been misinformed. I was assuming there was some violation with the pool, meaning you needed a certain height of fence for safety for kids and stuff in there. That's why I was curious if it needed to be higher than.
Yeah, but as far as I understood it, city ordinance says that if you have a pool on your property, the fence needs to be at least fifty-four inches from the base of the pool. And the proposed six foot is because the three feet doesn't meet that criteria and it has to be surrounded.
So if, if I may, make sure I understand. So the entirety of that red line is what he wants, six feet, right? And the one that is parallel with, with Midland is because he needs it for the pool. But what is in planning's kind of jurisdiction or for you guys to approve is the red line parallel to Crocksdale and thirty feet in. The one that, that goes horizontal, it's parallel with Midland, because that is his front setback, that wouldn't be allowed to be higher than three feet. So that's really what you guys are looking at to evaluate.
Correct.
Thank you for that. If there are no further questions, this will be a call for the vote to approve extending the height of the fence from three foot to six foot.
Call for the vote.
Thank you. That passes eight zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next up is B twenty-five dash sixty-six, Rocky Steel Property Management LLC. Variance request for reduction of required parking spaces, presented by Rocky Steel.
Good evening. Yes, I'm Rocky Steel with Rocky Steel Property Management and I am requesting a variance on those parking places.
What is your reasoning for requesting such?
Thirty-one fifty-four, we have a tenant in there that operates a, a small church and the thirty-one eighty became available or vacant and they're wanting to push a little Sunday school class over into the thirty-one eighty. So they've really been kind of occupying that entire parking lot the whole time, but just, it just came available, so we wanted to give them a shot.
Understood. Thanks. Any staff comments?
If I can note that this is part of an approved conditional use, C eighteen oh one, back from two thousand and eighteen, and it's still valid and in good standing. And since the applicant who the conditional use is issued to isn't changing, the location isn't changing, the use isn't changing, we just need to address parking in order for our office to allow use of that building.
Any public comments regarding this parking request? Commissioners, any questions regarding this?
So would they have to have a, excuse my ignorance on this too, would they have to have a, some type of shared parking agreement to use both? Or how, how does that usually work?
Do you own both buildings?
Correct.
Yeah. So he owns both buildings. So I think what's going on here is they've been kind of using the whole parking lot for the church purposes on Sunday. Now they have access to more space, which normally we would require more parking, but since they kind of don't have more people, they don't really need the higher parking, so. About right? Thanks. Any other questions? No, this will be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Thank you. That passes eight zero. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next up is B twenty-five dash sixty-nine, DeBoon Properties LLC. This is a variance for commercial design standards. A is detailed features, B is materials and color, presented by Neil Hefner.
Hi, I'm Neil Hefner. Basically, I own the property of four thousand Johnson. It has two metal buildings on it. And I'm proposing to add twenty-five feet to the rear building, which is blocked by the front building. It would be twelve hundred square foot addition, twelve hundred and fifty square foot addition, which is about fifteen percent of the building I'm adding on to. And I'm requesting a variance to use the same exact materials that's on the building and same color as both buildings.
Thank you. Any staff comments? Any public comment regarding this request? Commissioners, any questions? Yep, none. Y'all want to take these two requests together? Okay, this will be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Thank you. Passes eight zero. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next up is B twenty-five dash seventy, Panda Express. There's a variance for reduction of minimum distance between drives, a whole slew of variance for commercial design standards and a waiver of street improvements on South Thompson Street, presented by CFT NV Developments LLC.
Thank you, Aaron Douglas, Panda Restaurant Group and CFT Developments. Like you mentioned, we got a handful of variances. We're requesting for this existing restaurant on Thompson, looking to redevelop it to a Panda. A lot of the variances are due to the fact we have right of way on three sides. So most of, most of those variances stem, stem from that. Any questions about any of the variances specifically? Happy to explain kind of the reason why we're asking for a few of these, but.
Yeah, let's start with staff comments. If there are any.
So right now, this is actually a non-large scale development that's being reviewed by our office because it's a small enough site. So I don't actually have current staff comments on hand. But I, I looked at what was submitted and included in this packet. And maybe to anticipate some of Mark's questions, like for, for the building, right? Just by even the site plan that is in the packet on one of these pages, we can tell that it looks like a hundred percent of the parking is in front, is between what we would can kind of consider the front. And is there a certain street that you guys are considering your primary street or your Thompson? Gotcha. So a hundred percent of that parking on this new layout is, is there, which our rule caps it at sixty. So that's, that's one burn example, but.
So that's one burn example, but I don't have all the current comments.
For the driveways, they're really constrained by space here. And since Thompson's an arterial, we try to have a hundred and twenty feet between drives. That's just not possible on this site. And I think we're actually getting a big improvement because we're actually losing two drives as well. So it's gonna be a nice reconfiguration of the site.
Thank you. I guess my comment would be, when I see this many variance requests, I question, have we worked with our staff? Have we worked through some of these issues? And so that'd be my question. Is there any possible way you could table this and work with the staff a little bit more to knock some of these variances down? Is that something you're open to? Because I'd love to see this here.
Right.
I know it's a popular restaurant and I like improvements you're making, but I just think there's so much work that still needs to be done if that's something you're open to.
Yes, we have worked with staff quite a bit. What we're trying to protect is the volume. I mean, this is a busy street anyway. And so a lot of, to comply with a lot of those variances, it's going to put us at risk of backing our drive-through up and running into risk with traffic backing up out towards Thompson. We're trying to separate our drive-through traffic and parking traffic, which is why we have the additional curb cut on that north side. So we are asking for a lot of variances, but we did put a lot of thought into it and feel like this is the safest, most effective way to approach the site. Granted, we are asking for several approvals.
Okay, since you're taking that stance, let's go through some of these. What's the variance for landscaping and why are you asking for it?
So the landscape, the foundation plantings, if we have to additionally add space, we're going to lose one of the drive aisles in front of our building. We'd like our customers to be able to stay within our lot instead of having to exit out onto one of the side roads or out onto Thompson to kind of circulate back through. If we can keep them, you know, in our property, it keeps them off of the roads. That's, I think, the only landscape variance.
Can someone speak toward that?
I think we hit the percentage, but just didn't make the foundation planting requirement.
Hi, my name is Nate with Planning. I've been reviewing the non-large scale. And so I believe that perimeter landscaping is also required along. So that's why the east side of that portion was delineated and then also mentioned in the applications that we received.
Then can you speak toward the outdoor stores, trash collection and loading areas too?
Yes, that was, I think we had to, I think we have to hide it from the right-of-way. And again, since we have right-of-way on three sides, it's tough.
Another note, another note on the outdoor trash collection is the proximity to the pedestrian walkways, which was another part of the discussion, that it's a small site, it's a challenging site. So getting that twenty feet from an entrance, from a sidewalk would present a lot of challenges.
I think what we're proposing is better than what exists today. Correct me if I'm wrong, but we tried to improve it as much as we could. We just couldn't quite get to the finish line on a lot of these.
I guess the last question I have is, can you speak toward the waiver of street improvements on South Thompson?
We would require a ten-foot sidewalk on Thompson, so they're asking to just leave it as the existing five-foot, but it is there already.
So our current master plan shows ten-foot there and they want to remain with existing five-foot. Any public comment regarding this request? Commissioners, any questions? I guess we'll do the waiver first. The waiver will be a motion to forward to city council with the recommendation to deny or approve the waiver request.
Motion to send to city council to approve.
Second.
Thank you. That passes eight-zero. Do we want to take all the variances together? Okay, this will be called for the vote. Thank you. That passes seven to one. And finally, call for the vote for minimal distance between drives.
Call for the vote.
Thank you. That passes eight-zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is B twenty-five dash seventy-two, Monte and Sheila Ewald. Requested for variance for reduction of front setback from thirty-five foot to fifteen, reduction of side setback from twenty to fifteen, presented by Monte Ewald.
Good evening, Monte and my wife Sheila. So we are asking, well, we're fixing to place a metal building, metal garage, twenty-foot deep, twenty-four-foot wide on our little lot for the purpose of just general storage and everything else anybody would use a garage for. So we're asking for the variances that are indicated in the agenda. On the side, we almost meet the setback. So, but pretty close, so we're asking for the five extra feet there. On the, the front is the issue that we're encountering because we have this, this big old fifty-foot right-of-way apparently that we have to meet before we can even start measuring our thirty-five-foot setback, which puts our building behind the front facade of our house. And the problem with that is that now it's going to be blocking the living room windows on the, on the side of, they're on the north side of the house, but near the front. So we can't really place it back further to meet the existing setbacks because it's going to block the windows. So hence, asking for an extra twenty feet off that setback so we can move forward with our project.
Thank you. Any staff comments? I'm confused, I guess. So are we talking about this twenty-by-twenty-four garage? Is that what we're looking at?
Yes.
And it doesn't exist? You want to build it?
Correct. It's gonna be a new, a new building, metal building on a concrete pad.
And this currently, is this location where you want to do it? Is that where, or are you saying you want to move it?
Yeah, that's a general orientation, yeah.
Yes, I'm just not following the setbacks. I don't see them that much different, but.
So according to our survey and then consultation with your office, we have the fifty-foot right-of-way and then, and then, and then add it on that to thirty-five-foot setback. So that would put the setback line actually behind the front of our house.
What's the garage for?
Just general storage, put a car in when the weather gets bad, workspace, that sort of thing.
And I'll also note that this is zoned A1, so it's a legal non-conforming lot. So typically, we have a minimum of, I'm not sure how big your entire site is.
It's point five.
Okay, so typically, we have two acres for an A1 lot. So you see those kind of exaggerated setbacks where it's thirty-five on the sides as well and thirty-five on the front, where typical residential ones are just thirty, twenty and eight on the sides.
Well, also because we don't have an existing garage, it had been converted.
Yeah, yeah. So that's our, that's our problem. It's a beautiful master suite with a nice large walk-in closet, but I still didn't get my garage, so hence why we're here.
Any public comment regarding this request? Any commissioners, any questions? No, this will be called for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Thank you. That passes eight-zero. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Next is B twenty-five dash seventy-three, Matthew and Amelia Goff, Seth and Lauren White, and William and Candice Jenkins. This is a variance for reduction of rear and side setbacks for non-conforming structure to remain, presented by Matthew Goff.
Yes, I'm Matthew Goff. Thanks for letting me come tonight. So these three properties side by side, the nine-three-eight property on the east has property runs behind the other two tracks. And we're seeking to straighten out our property lines. So we're going to purchase from the nine-three-eight fella the property behind eight-nine-six Dusty Lane and nine-hundred Dusty Lane just to square those property lines up and trade some property around. The issue is a couple of existing sheds exist on the nine-three-eight property. There's two on the east side that are too close to that line and one on the back of my property was eight-nine-six Dusty Lane. The sheds are a little closer. All those sheds have been there for, since before I owned the property. So we're asking to leave those sheds in place as we do this change of property lines, straight, to straighten them up. Pretty simple.
Thank you. Any staff comments regarding the sheds, anything?
Impressive neighbor cooperation on this project, I'll say that.
That's true.
I wanted to comment on that too. I was noticing, I was like, wow, we're cleaning this up. I like it.
How do you get three people to say, get on the same page? It's impressive. Any public comment regarding this? Or none. Commissioners, this will be called for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Thank you. That passes eight-zero. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next up is waivers. First is W twenty-five dash thirty-two, Lionel Rivas. Presented as waiver of street improvements, sidewalk on Overoou Circle, presented by Lionel.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
My name is Myra Rivas. I'm just going to be translating for my dad today, if that's okay. So we're seeking a waiver for the sidewalk that's being required here. Nowhere on the other street does it have a sidewalk, right? There aren't any existing sidewalks. But I'll say that and also say that we're open to making the sidewalk. If it is required, we're not opposed, but we'd prefer, I think, they do it versus waiting on the city. We did submit some of the images up here, but yeah.
Thank you. Any staff comments? Any commissioner questions? Any public comment regarding this sidewalk waiver request?
I've got Google mapping this and this neighborhood is not sidewalk, but there's adjacent neighborhoods that are, so it's kind of weird.
Yeah. Apparently, we didn't have very strong sidewalk. Code back in the day. If there's no questions, this is a motion to forward to city council with the recommendation to deny or approve. Go ahead.
I just have a quick question. I mean, the chances of the city coming in and doing something in that neighborhood, probably pretty low. So it wouldn't make sense to do any kind of, okay.
I would say we are revising our master trails plan this year. So that might be something we can ponder if O'Vero needs some sidewalks or if there are some other streets in that neighborhood that need sidewalks. I think there's a lot of neighborhoods right around there that need sidewalks.
A lot of places in Springdale need sidewalks. Do I get a motion in a second?
I move that we forward this to city council with the recommendation to approve this request.
Second.
Thank you. That passes eight-zero. Maybe if you all want to get your neighbors together and build a sidewalk, that'd be great. Otherwise, you're good.
Thank you so much.
Staff is going to prepare a resolution that's going to go to city council on September twenty-third. You're encouraged to be there, but you're not required to.
Understood. Thank you so much.
Next up is W twenty-five dash thirty-three, John Dewise. Waiver of street improvements, sidewalk on Huntsville Avenue, presented by John Dewise.
Brian's next, so we're just going to come together if you don't care. I'll be his speaker.
Support.
We built with Sharon a couple duplexes on Huntsville. They look real nice. A couple of weeks ago, we were approached by Tom from the building department saying, hey, we need you to look at doing a ten-foot sidewalk. There's a three-foot there now. So I went back and I looked, all the utilities on that north side. So the power lines, the water, the gas, the electric, everything's within six or seven feet. So we want to propose five feet for now. And if all that gets moved later, then you could make ten for everybody, so.
You know what?
A lot of challenges to moving everything.
No, I understand. I read, I remember reading this in the packet and all the utilities.
Because our underground is already there, our gas lines are in, everything.
What is the sidewalk to home Huntsville?
We're three right now.
And it's a, it's like a two-foot green space and maybe a three or four-foot sidewalk.
Three and a half.
And so what I would propose is, can we see if we can get four-foot green space, maybe? And then we can kind of curve around those utilities if we need to.
We've already pulled it all out, so if we did a five, would it match up with the three that's there?
Right.
And then everything's at six and seven, so we'd miss everything if we stayed at five and two.
Right, it's just that, like, anything we would build now, the minimum green space would be four feet. So that's what I'm just saying, like, can we try and get to the five, five and four? But I know we have a lot of constraints on the side.
Five and three? Maybe.
Yeah.
Or you could do four and three.
Katie, would you rather have the green space or the sidewalk being five-foot wide?
We definitely need five-foot sidewalk. I'll take any green space I can get.
Our neighbors, if you do ten, it's going to be on their front porch. They were there before the road got widened, so.
Yeah, I definitely support a five-foot sidewalk here because we also had some miscommunication when this was originally permitted on.
Yeah, no one told us till two weeks ago. So I get a call, it's like, well, you look at it. So I go there and look and I'm like, everything's at six and seven. We already have our gas, we're two weeks away from finishing too.
Yeah, I'm very familiar with this project. I've dropped out all the time.
And it looks good, though, you think?
It's definitely better than what was there.
Okay.
Yeah.
We're improving the area, but I think two and five would be the best. And it would stay with what everybody else has. And then if you wanted to go to ten later, you just have to add five more feet. But you're going to have to move water hydrants, telephone poles, everything, underground gas, everything.
Do we, so if this is, if the commission agrees with you, is this where we motion to city council to approve the waiver with the stipulation to be two-foot of green space, five-foot sidewalk? Would you just add that commentary and you're good with that?
Yeah, we would have been, we would have done the ten if it hadn't have been for each other.
If you hadn't already, yeah, I get it.
And it would look funny because you've got to move poles back.
Yeah.
And they're up here, I mean.
Yeah. Is there any public comment regarding this waiver request? Commissioners, any questions? If none, do you understand the, what we're moving forward with to the city council? I need a motion in a second.
Motion to forward to city council to approve their waiver, but that the sidewalk's five-foot and there's two, two feet of green space.
Yes, that'd be perfect.
Good job, Howard.
Second.
Hey, I'm retired in two years, so if you have an opening, I'd be glad to come in, maybe volunteer. Got a lot of experience of doing things wrong and right.
That passes eight-zero.
Staff is going to draft a resolution that does have to go to city council on the twenty-third, like the last reason you did. You're not required to go to the city council, but encouraged.
So is this fifteen oh one, is it right next door?
Yes, it is. It's, they are, they're a duo.
So I don't think we need more comments. Do I get a motion in a second for the same request to city council? You'll have to speak it, though.
Motion.
Help us out, Howard.
To approve their waiver for a five-foot sidewalk and two-foot green space.
And we're pouring back all the curb, we're taking out the old approaches, it's going to look nice.
Second.
Thank you.
Well, the motion should have been to forward it to city council.
Correct.
Thank you.
We gave Howard a little grace on that. Passes eight-zero as well. Thank you, gentlemen.
Appreciate your time.
Yours will also go on the twenty-third, okay?
Okay, we'll be there. Thank you.
Next up is W twenty-five dash thirty-six, Haberton Trails. It's a waiver of street improvements on Don Tyson Parkway, presented by ESI. Haberton Trails, it's a waiver of street improvements on Don Tyson Parkway presented by ESI.
Thank you, Jason Apple with ESI. Planning Commission heard this PUD for Haberton Trails at the last meeting and was approved by council recently or during discussions with staff. And I think during the review process, it was brought to our attention and we needed a 10-foot sidewalk along Don Tyson. Currently, there's an 8-foot sidewalk and we're requesting a 2-foot waiver.
So we just couldn't get this waiver on last time just because of timing, but we have 8-foot currently. They had suggested that they could put two feet on, but then that would put the joint right in a wheel path of the bicycle. So we said, we are fine with eight and then it will match what's on Haberton and the rest of Don Tyson as well.
Thank you for that, Katie. Any public comments regarding this request? Commissioners, any questions? If none, this will be a motion to forward to City Council with the recommendation to deny or approve this waiver.
A move that we forward is to City Council with the recommendation that we approve this waiver.
Second.
Thank you. That passes eight zero.
Thank you.
The resolution will go to council on the 23rd.
Next up is other, says Ezekiel Valderas. He is willing to expand a non-conforming structure presented by Ezekiel Valderas.
My name is Ezekiel Valderas and I just asked for a petition for a non-conformity extension on the back of the house. We're planning on doing an exterior kitchen roughly 14 by 33 on the back with a cover area.
Thank you. Any staff comments?
Um, I would just note that this, this is a legal non-conformity, which is why we're handling it the way that we are. But it's a residential structure being used for residential purposes, but it's zoned commercial. And so if you want to expand a non-conformity, you're limited to up to 30% and Planning Commission has to approve it. So that's why we see it under the other section here.
So you're saying you're building an outdoor kitchen? Is that what you said?
That's what we're planning on.
Sure.
Cover area.
But covered?
Yes.
Yeah. Is there any public comments regarding this expansion? Commissioners, any comments? Have you considered rezoning this to residential?
We're not, not ready for it yet, but maybe later. Not sure yet.
Because every time you do something, you're going to come here and talk to us about it.
Yes, sir.
And we'd rather have this be residential, so.
Yeah, no, I'll think about it later, not right now.
This will be called for the vote. Up, question, yes.
Um, so right now, you're just using that as your personal residence?
Yes, sir.
And so you're expanding your kitchen just for your personal use with no plans to change this into anything in the future and then have it rezoned commercially? Okay, thank you.
It's a big call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Thank you. That passes eight zero. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Uh, going back to the first page, is Jose Cruz Torres present? No, never made it back. As far as I can tell, that ends the agenda from projects. Next up is Planning Director's Report.
And then for, for Mr. Jose Torres here, that, that wasn't, or I'm so sorry, the last one that wasn't here. He was tabled last time, so he will have to restart from the beginning if he wants to seek that request again. All right, the End Director's Report. Thank you to everyone. If folks came last Friday, it was the Shaw Park Baseball Complex out there in the northwest Springdale. It's Shaw Park ribbon cutting. And save the date next Tuesday, September 9th at 10:00 a.m. is the ribbon cutting for the senior center down here on Emma Avenue. We are excited about this. This is fantastic. It came in ahead of schedule, under budget. So we would love to see commissioners, anyone and everyone that supports city, supports the seniors, be there. We had one new CVO that was issued this month, unless there was any new ones that I wasn't aware of. But this was the only one I heard of from Sarah, was that Harbor Surgery Center out there on Isaac's Orchard Road. It looks fantastic. We were conducting interviews. We're still hiring for two positions. We got a ton of response for the administrative assistance. We're pouring through and doing more interviews. So we hope to have some exciting news maybe at the next one. Upcoming work sessions, so September 16th, Katie and her team are going to lead this all things stormwater mitigation and drainage. She did this a few years ago. We loved it and so we want more. And the October work session, we have a guest speaker, Sarah Gertz. She's a landscape architect with Earth Design Alternatives with EDA. Their office is located right down here downtown. And she has an emphasis on native plantings. So we'll be excited to hear from her. That's on the 21st. And that, the October one will be our last kind of typical work session of the year. Then we have November off and then December, we try to get together and spend a little quality time. Some council update. So from City Council on the 12th, everything that went was approved, mainly Platts and a waiver. And then City Council from the 26th, all items, all items were approved by council and there was one appeal that was overturned. And that was that zoning over on Levine. They overturned a Planning Commission's denial of this. So the petition was amended and it now includes two 50-foot buffer strips, one on the south side and one on the east side of this piece of property. And we are drafting up ordinance and going to have it to council next Tuesday for the September 9th. Some of our downtown revitalization stuff, we're still working with H3 and our consultants. So we hope to, by the October Planning Commission, have something before you guys and then City Council and have a strong wrap-up to our downtown master plan and form-based code before the end of the year. And then shout out to our Leadership Springdale class this year. We may have some folks here in attendance, but Jackie from Planning, we have Chris Herrera from Engineering. I think Cam, right, from City Attorney's Office is in it too. Those are very strong class, so you may see them in. Oh my gosh, shout out leaders. And then the Unified Development Code progress continues. When I know more and am able to share next steps, I will, but we are full steam ahead, so thank you, guys.
And Jennifer, she's also.
My gosh, our Planning Commissioner! How could I forget Jennifer?
Also, the senior center ribbon, ribbon cutting is next Tuesday, I believe. They didn't quite make their CVO, but they've started to open up and give tours and they're looking really good. It's exciting.
I think in one day they had, I think they had reported like 600 people had gone through and toured it in one day, which is unbelievable, but yeah.
So it's Tuesday?
Tuesday, September 9th. And I can, we can send back a kind of save the date flyer just so you guys can have it on your calendar. That's helpful.
With that, our vote will adjourn. See you next month.